Okay, welcome to the September 2nd regular meeting in town in Niqwa. We'll start off, be it resolved that we hereby approve the regular meeting agenda for September 2nd. Move by, Councillor Costin-Chuck, seconded by Councillor Naddo. All in favor, opposed, carried. Next, minutes of the regular meeting were sent out. Be it resolved that we hereby approve the minutes of the regular meeting held August 5th, 2025 is circulated. Move by, Councillor Gerard, seconded by Councillor Clark. Any questions on the minutes? If not, all in favor, opposed, carried. Okay, we'll start off with council reports. Deputy Mayor Parrott?
So, last week we had a recruitment and retention meeting at the clinic. And the big highlights there is Dr. Elyche is now operational. And he's doing coverage so that other doctors can also go on holidays. And we will be taking the residency doctors' quadding as a thank you for choosing Niqwa. And I'll let you do all the other things that go along with it. The video went along.
Oh, well. August 19th, we actually had the opportunity to meet all five of our resident doctors. And there was gift bags put together. It was a fabulous meeting with them to get some feedback and stuff. With that, how far am I going into that? So, from there, we
All the way.
We did a healthcare worker appreciation barbecue. And I kind of did a little bit behind the scenes beforehand, just getting the hospital and care home and getting numbers for meals and stuff. Just of note for everybody, this was an important barbecue for us. It was our first go at showing appreciation to all of our healthcare workers, which included doctors, nurses, eye doctors, dentists. It included all of the staff in the facilities, all the way down to maintenance. We wanted to really just make sure everybody was included in this. So, we delivered 195 meals to our healthcare workers on August 28th from the barbecue. And then we had 77 workers that came down that we knew of that attended the barbecue. And then the rest was the general public that came down for that. We do want to thank Justin Chakowski and Niqwa Handy Ben for delivering the meals and to the co-op staff for cooking for nearly five hours straight in the heat to ensure that everybody got fed. They cooked for a total of, I think there was 360-plus burgers is what they cooked that day, which was great. And wanted to also give a little special shout out to Gary Ford in this one because Gary jumped in and put on the Blackstone so that we could get everybody fed in good time. And to the town staff for all the effort that was put into that day.
Also, High Life?
Yes, High Life and Co-op and Safeway, who all donated towards this. They were delicious pork burgers. I think everybody was pretty happy with what they had with that, so. Yeah, I think that's
The upcoming thing?
Well, so that, Marilyn, do you want to have that in your No, okay. Okay, so on September 20th in Brandon, there is a resident retreat for first and second year resident doctors in Manitoba. And Prairie Mountain Health does get to host that retreat this year. So, we have a table, Marilyn and our mayor, Brian Headley, will be there along with two staff from the Beautiful Plains Community Medical Clinic. And we have put together, we've got a committee that we, technically, I don't know that we've got the technical name yet. So, I won't say that yet. But we've put together and we are ensuring to do everything we can to attract doctors to Niqwa. The committee has put together, what council saw tonight for a video. It is a recruitment retention video, just trying to sell Niqwa to these doctors and show them everything that we've got to offer. And we feel that we really touched on a lot of the stuff in the video. The doctors will get USB drives with that video on it. And then there'll be links to the websites, the clinic websites, the chooseniqwa.ca website, which has the medical recruitment information on there. Yeah, and we're putting together pamphlets with it. And it is just us really making that effort to show what we have to offer here, so.
Great. Anyone else? Councillor Naddo?
Yeah, we're still continuing to run a really good employment, skills and services center here at Westlake. And we're seeing more and more people come in, especially from our surrounding area. We're seeing an increase there, which is good because that's our mandate, is to service the region. And there's a lot happening there. We had a local advisory committee library meeting. And there's a lot going on in September. Here's just a sheet that kind of shows everything, from escape rooms to Dungeons and Dragons. Libraries are way beyond, again, way beyond what we're used to seeing. And to give you an example, some of the things our local library is purchasing in order to have to lend to patrons. And anyone that has a Niqwa library card, we're looking at purchasing some DVD players. Some residents are requesting that they no longer have one that works so that they can use that when they take out a DVD, so they can loan that. A CD player, we're seeing a lot of people, now that computers don't come anymore with these devices, we're seeing a need for things like that, so that's really neat. As well as some of the cool games that go with the switches and stuff that the kids can work on when they're in the library, which is just in addition to the great books that are there. Speaking of great books, our library, to do a fundraiser, we purchased tickets to see Lewis Penny. So, it's a famous author coming to Winnipeg on Halloween of all days. And there's going to be a draw there. And there's a chance for our residents to get tickets in order to possibly win tickets to go see Lewis Penny, which is one of those hard-to-get ticket things that we were able to quickly jump on with a lot of our residents wanting that. Our committee's actually really gung-ho right now at, lights still aren't changed. So, our committee's gung-ho on beautifying the library, right in front of the library also. And one thing we noticed is our boulevard, ever since the street was redone, it just, the grass isn't taking. But we have a plan to solve that. We'd like to see more in front of the library to make it more user-friendly. We had a lot of good discussions, we kind of looked at it. So, Denise, they're going to be contacting you just to kind of get your input, to get some suggestions on how to use that space and make it more friendly and welcoming for our citizens. So, those are the big things happening on the library front.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Okay, anyone else? Rick?
I have a coordinator's report from hand for the month of July. Lifeline had three new installs, the community meal program. They've gained a few new clients. Georgia Vicki took some well-deserved vacation. The relief was great. Thank you very much for the people that came in to do that for the meals. Meals on Wheels, we have gained quite a few new clients and new volunteers in July thanks to Marshall Fork, who is now the volunteer coordinator for Niqwa. And so, it's very important to get the volunteers out to help with that Meals on Wheels. The exercise and mocking group at the Elks Manor, due to a lot of heat and smoke, they weren't able to do a lot of the exercise programs. But they are going to kind of kick back in the fall here and have their regular exercise program. The Manitoba Rent Assist, it's a program for anyone over 18 that's paying rent each month. Doesn't seem to be a well-known program. So, Michelle has been promoting it to the seniors to help out with their monthly living expenses. Over the last six months, she's had a lot of requests for assistance with providing application forms, helping with the documents that are required. She wanted to note that a lot of seniors are living solely on CPP and old age pension. Their income most often qualifies them for the assistance. And she's seen a heating tactic in this program. So, she wanted everyone to know that it is available, that you would just go to see her and she can help you with getting the forms and applying. Foot Care Clinic, she will be back there again September 29th and will be returning every six weeks because she is booked every time she is coming into the facility. And we're having a pancake brunch fundraiser. It's a pancake brunch that we're having. It's a little bit different this year. It's September the 8th from 10:30 in the morning till 12:30. It's in the dining room of the Yellowhead Manor. And it's pancakes and coffee and tea or juice and some fruit and sausage. So, if you can make it out, that would be great.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Nope. If not, go on to our manager of operations, Denise.
Hey, Mayor Headley. Few obvious ones is that work has begun on Mill Street. That had concluded the drainage works and we were waiting on our contractor to come in to do the sewer work. So, they've shown up, bricked everything up, and now they're starting the backfill process. And then we'll try to keep some updates in some social media once we know for sure when concrete work or pavement is going to happen. We'll see some more interruptions, but we'll try to keep the public advised on that. Hamilton Street Project, in front of the hospitals, coming along. Unfortunately, we're substantially behind schedule now just due to all the rain we've encountered. It seems whenever we start to get a break, it rains again. But they're still picking away, they're still working. North-south portion of that road, on the west side of the new hospital, same thing. They've made some good progress, that one's advancing nicely. Town staff started Second Avenue water renewal today. So, for that one, we just started stripping the street. And then we'll start construction work tomorrow, that one's going this week. Hopefully, weather doesn't impede too much of the progress there. For residents that are concerned about sidewalks, we still have more sidewalk work that's going to be scheduled in. Our contractor just had to take a break and do some other private work. So, we'll see if we can get him back and get some more action there. Town staff, we're working on Isabel Street, I believe they've got the boulevards there, grass seeded just to kind of hold that boulevard in so we don't see any erosion along the back of the curb. So, again, those lots are all looking good and taking shape nicely there. General upkeep around the community's just been ongoing, so branches down, stuff like that. Sewer cleaning, all the routine day-to-day stuff, it's still occurring as it's needed, so.
Good. Any other questions with Denise? If not, we'll move on to our director of recreation, Cassandra Loomin-Robinson.
Okay, so, last day of operation for the pool was August 31st, where we had New Way, Rotary and Kiwanis sponsor half the public swims, so from 1 to 2. It was free entry and it was a great way to end the season doing it like that, so that was awesome. This season, we had 601 kids go through public swimming lessons, 215 go through private swimming lessons, for a total of 816 kids that took swimming lessons at Niqwa Swimming Pool this summer. So, it's a lot of kids. Our staff did do, like, staff bingos and different morale things. And I think that really worked well. Our staff Olympics went well, where I think that they worked very well as a group together. Day camp ended August 22nd. Our staff also got along very well and it was a great season. They had 20 kids every day for all eight weeks, so we were completely booked up the whole summer. And a lot of great comments for that as well. Our campground managers end their contract next week. The campground continues to August, or sorry, September 31st. We have around 900 bookings this summer as of right now. That's including long-term and short-term stays. It could change within the next month, but that's pretty good, I'd say. And then we've launched a new program, thanks to Help Be Together Now. So, we got a grant for a program called Gathering Our Roots, which is a variety of traditional activities like drumming, beating and more. Registration opened this afternoon and we already have six people signed up for each session, so. I'd say it's definitely a want in the community. Silver Club Initiative, which is programming that's possible from HFM in Attleboro, I'm sure you all know. All has been going very well. We've had sold-out dances every month and will continue it all the way until the end of December. We have activities each month and some bus trips. So, we recently went to Ryanmount National Park, Bergen Rodeo, and went to Rivers for a fishing trip, where the Wildlife Federation there actually partnered with us and took them on the pontoon boat for fishing, so.
Did you guys get any fish?
Yeah, we caught three fish. It was a fun afternoon, though. Everyone was really happy. And then upcoming, we have September 12th, which is the dance. And then September 23rd, which is an autumn sign-making class. And then September 17th is the grocery trip. We're working on fixing our storybook trail signs. So, we're going to try and test a few different types of materials to see if they also change color with the lighting. But we're going to fix those and get them up as soon as possible. And then last month, we did a food initiative with Calvary Chapel volunteers, where we made around 75 portions of pre-cooked freezer meals for the food bank. You'll notice a new fence in the pickleball course area. This is thanks to the Niqwa Pickleball Association getting a grant and working with us to help build fences to prevent hazards from interfering from the pickleballers, so like balls moving from court to court. We'll also be hosting multiple events for the week of Halloween again this year. So, we'll have the costume parade. And we're going to work with a few of our local organizations to do a few different activities. We're getting a lot of local organizations reaching out and wanting to partner, and I want to embrace that. So, this Halloween will be hopefully partnering with a lot of different organizations. We have a Home Alone course coming up November 5th and then a babysitter's course November 28th.
If any questions, Councillors? Looks like done, thank you. Okay, and now we'll ask our economic development officer, Marilyn Cruz, come up and give her a report.
Thank you. So, in light of the Project 320 and Phase 1 with the housing coming online sooner rather than later, I'm going to offer an event called Pathway to Owning Your Own Home. So, this will be a free event and will provide information for people who are learning about buying their own homes. So, we're going to talk about financial literacy, working with a bank or credit union around financing a home, working with the town and the planning office, working with a Realtor, working with a lawyer, all of those basic things. So, it's going to be a full-day informational event on October 4th. You will soon see marketing with a QR code for registration. So, if you would like to attend the event, I'm just going to ask for preregistration so that I have an idea of how many people will be there so that I can feed them all. But anyone who has any questions about the event or any other things that I talk about today, they can give me a call at the office. I'm starting to plan the 2025 What's the Big Idea event. I'm happy to say this is the 10th anniversary of this event. Over 60,000 in cash and prizes. If anyone is interested in pitching their business at this event, could just give me a call here at the office. It will be held on, did I say that? October 16th at the Legion. The Training Center, so the LPN program is now wrapped up, that lease is finished. They will come back again to another LPN program starting January of 2027. So, we're working to secure programs to be in the Training Center during that interim time. We've met with ACC on a couple of program options and we'll keep you posted on that. However, the challenge with the Training Center right now would be furnishings. So, the LPN program came complete with desks and chairs and the office furniture for the teachers, everything. And so, now I am sourcing out grants to help equip with desks and chairs and instructor tables to make sure that we can provide program space for whoever comes in there, regardless of whether they bring their own equipment or not. The Children's Business Fair was held on October 14th in partnership with Arts Forwards Farmers Market. There were 17 businesses this year and they made $20,019 in three hours of operation. So, it's a really great event and a really good opportunity for kids to see what it's like to, you know, run their own little business. I have been doing some website updates at chooseniqwa.ca. I've updated a little bit of information around housing there. Medical recruitment, including the video, will be added under the medical recruitment page. And also, the lots that are for sale on the Isabel Street Extension are now listed for sale on the website. The Provincial Nominee Program Partnership that we entered into with Brandon Economic Development, I've submitted the resolution so they know that we're engaged as a partner. And we're now waiting for a meeting with the province. Boise and Verden are also partnering with Brandon, so they're waiting until all the paperwork is done and we'll meet with the province all at the same time rather than doing repeat meetings. So, I expect to hear about that soon. Two billboards were replaced. So, this was in my budget for 2025 to replace the town billboard out by Bay Hill Inn and Suites and the one on Eastview Lodge Hill site. They were both starting to show their age and so that work was completed last week.
Excellent. Okay, thanks, Ma'am. Any questions, Mary? Okay, thank you. Okay, I guess we'll move on to correspondence with Colleen.
So, very quickly, this is just notification that later this fall, Canada Post will be installing a community mailbox at West Park Mobile Home Park. And the 51 occupants that live over there will actually change from a post office box to a community mailbox delivery. In order to support this change, they will adopt the civic-formatted address as their mailing address and discontinue the use of the post office box numbering for those customers. These customers will be notified with a 30-day letter in September that specifies their new mailing address. And of course, they cite information and when these changes will take effect. They will get one year forwarding from the old Canada Post box as well. This will free up 51 boxes in an already overflowing post office.
Okay, next we'll move on to finance. So, we have I guess we've got checks to do here. So, be it resolved that we approve the August 2025 list of accounts totaling $1,343,388.77 as reviewed and representing EFTs 1302 to 1439 and checks 2025-000606 and 2025-000685, but excluding check 2025-000665 and 2025-000666.
That was the middle one?
Move by, Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Councillor Clark. All in favor, opposed, carried. Here, Councillor Gerard, no, we'll exclude ourselves for conflict.
Okay, so the resolution reads, be it resolved that we approve check 2025-000665 and 2025-00066 for August 2025 to Home Hardware Niqwa Plus and Co-op totaling $10,127.90. Move by. Councillor Costin, checked, asked, moved by, Councillor Naddo. All those in favor, carried.
Okay, I guess this is fairly simple. I don't know if you had anything else to talk about with MNP or just the fact that the resolution reads that be it resolved that we accept the auto-proposal of MNP and appoint them as a town in Niqwa auditor for years 2025 to 2028 at an annual rate of $32,000 for 2025, $31,000 for 2026, $33,000 for 2027, and $35,000 for 2028, plus applicable taxes. Move by. Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Councillor Costin-Chuck. Any questions? If not, those in favor, opposed, carried. New business, Colleen?
This is just an annual request for the street closure for the 2025 Santa Fe Parade of Lights to be held November 29th at 6:00 p.m. Same rules last year at, start at 6:00 p.m. sharp for a session parade congregating near the Yellowhead Arena and continuing south on Mountain Avenue to Davidson Street, east on Davidson to Brown Avenue, south on Brown to Hamilton, heading west past First Avenue and dispersal.
November 29th?
November 29th.
Okay, resolution reads, be it resolved that the town, the council of town, authorize the closure of the following streets to facilitate the Parade of Lights from Saturday, November 29th of 2025, starting at Yellowhead Arena, traveling south on Mountain to Davidson, Davidson to Brown, Brown to Hamilton, west on Hamilton past First Avenue for dispersal. These streets to remain closed until the end of the parade or scheduled festivities. Move by. Councillor Sisley, seconded by Councillor Clark. All in favor, opposed, carried. Training Center, Colleen?
So, as mentioned before by EDO crew, work is being done more recently to figure out what we're going to host at the Training Center in between licensed practical nursing sessions. Because we built the facility, I think we all agree at the table here, we would try and make sure we have tenants. So, work has been done with the Assiniboine Community College in this regard. The window that fits best over there is a one-year certificate program, which would be for the delivery of medical administration. So, that program basically runs from January through to December 11th, I think it is. It's a 10-month program with the summer off. They will be using basically only one classroom. So, as mentioned, work will be underway to make sure we furnish the space, to make sure that we get a lease in place for the space. We will not be getting the same lease as we did when we ran the facility at full capacity. It's not quite, it's better than half because they still will use all the ancillary space as well. But work will also continue, in addition to medical administration, to see what we actually put in there in the short term for even short-stint courses that could fit in in the classroom. You know, there's lots of things in the queue. We are researching, you know, whether it be paramedics or otherwise, but those need longer windows of delivery than what we're able to offer. So, there is a resolution here. If you'll support it, allowing the mayor and I when the lease document comes forward to, where it's signed the lease, should be able to run the course at $3,500 a month lease to ACC for medical administration.
Any questions? Be it resolved that the town in Niqwa approve entering into a lease with the Assiniboine Community College to host a medical administration certificate program at the Niqwa Training Facility in 2026 at a rate of $3,500 per month. To be further, and be further resolved that the mayor and CEO will be given authority to conclude the terms of the agreement. Move by. Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Councillor Sisley. All in favor, opposed, carried. Carry.
I may be just out, Brian. I think it's important, though, for anybody who might be watching at home or if the discussion starts to happen around the community, there will be an information session night we're hoping to host in September, like we've done for the other courses for LPN or otherwise, to get people interested in the basket out there. Our window of opportunity to fill these seats, hopefully '25, is roughly a three-month period. So, if there's anybody interested at all, contact the office in advance or pay attention for when the posters actually start going out and we establish, I don't think we established a date, Deputy Marilyn?
No, we're waiting for them.
Yeah, so, anyway, keep tuned. There will be a course in Ni'poua that, we also understand it has been vetted through the shared health and through the Prairie Mountain Health Authority, and they believe these individuals will be very key and employable once they're done, so...
So the Training Center itself is empty right now, like all the furniture got moved for the next program? Okay.
When you're part of the licensed practical program, especially if they're rotating, they take everything and move it on to the next site. So all of that went to Steinbach within the last few weeks here, which we were hoping to get another LPN successive to that one. We weren't able to do so, so we are in the process now of sourcing out. We'll have. You know, we've got options, we just don't want it to be just a makeshift class, or we want to make it look professional, so, you know, we're sourcing out at the best advantage and either through canoe, through their association of municipalities, we get discounts or otherwise, but make sure that we're ready to go when they, they can come get.
Okay, and the last one, Colleen, Highway 16 Functional Design?
Uh, so this is a resolution based on some discussions Denise and I more recently have with the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure. This goes back to being based on a 2004 functional design study that was done for PTH 16 through Ni'poua. In that particular design, all those many 21 years ago, they identified the fact that around the core section of the commercial highway district that you would find if you more pointedly go out to look at where Dairy Queen extends to the corner of the lights for PTH 5 and 16 on the north side of the highway and then on the south side of the highway, basically running from the gas of the Esso and Tim Hortons all the way down, you know, to the end of the business district and past the co-op. So what we're requesting now is based on everything that's going on with Project 320, with everything that's going on with the development down Dominion Road, with everything that's happening in the CN area, we're looking at the fact that when we did our traffic impact study for the Project 320, there may be traffic changes imposed on PTH 16 nor 5 or both, and, you know, without knowing what the 2004 functional design would do to that traffic and the alterations that might occur because of those things, if they were in place, what would that mean to what they might propose to be changed now because of current development? We don't know those answers. So in discussions with the department, we talked about putting in a resolution to the government to have them step up the game, create the service roads around that particular commercial highway business district there, and prove that those changes maybe will either reduce the impact on the other sections of the highway or, in the end, actually cause a greater safe neighborhood at large out there. So basically, this is what the resolution is asking for the province to proceed. What isn't in the resolution is the fact that, as you all know, when Rutledge Road was there, it's now moved further north and it's actually changed to Stonehouse Street, we actually did probably two-thirds to three-quarters of the north service road and it's to a paid standard right now. So as much as the province was going to pay for those in Stage 1 and 2 of the 2004 functional, we've already gone forward and paid for and completed a good chunk of that already on our own due course, just to make sure that we can adapt and grow with the community. So they would only be on the hook for finishing up that project at this point, and we're hoping at least we can spark some discussion.
Okay, any questions? Resolution reads, whereas in 2004, the province of Manitoba endorsed a long-range plan known as PTH 16, Ni'poua Functional Design for the upgrading of PTH 16 through the town of Ni'poua to ensure minimal conflict between land development and highway traffic. And whereas the expansion and development of residential, institutional, and commercial properties in Ni'poua have significantly increased the demand on the highway system relative to both local and commuter traffic. Whereas Ni'poua continues to grow and develop with several new planned initiatives unfolding on both the east and west side of Ni'poua. And whereas the town has proceeded with a traffic impact study for a 58-acre residential development to the northwest PTH 16 and 5 intersection, the draft recommendations of which conflict changes to the highway system, which may include the requirement to construct a north-south service road to reduce highway access conflicts, provide enhanced connectivity, and ensure public safety. And whereas actions by the province to upgrade PTH 16 through Ni'poua as per the 2004 functional design have been extremely limited and poses an increased risk, especially where PTH 5 traffic is superimposed, leading to increasing conflict between local circulation and highway and highway-through traffic. Therefore, be it resolved that the town of Ni'poua hereby request the Department of Manitoba Transportation and Infrastructure to actively proceed with the first two stages of the functional design related to the construction of the north-south service roads along, around the commercial business district from PTH 5 to Fifth Avenue, and be further resolved that if any further highway improvements identified for this area of Ni'poua as part of the most recent traffic study, incorporate a commitment by the province of Manitoba to facilitate the construction of PTH 16 service roads and around the commercial business district as a critical step in modernization of the highway system and the precursor to understanding the score of improvements that will be necessary to address traffic that is outpacing the design of the transportation network through Ni'poua. Okay, and also long read, move by. Counselor Gerard, seconded by Counselor Clark. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, is there any other additional business? Seeing none, be it resolved that the council of the town of Ni'poua do now adjourn this regular meeting at 7:35 p.m. Move by. Deputy Mayor Parrott, and seconded by Counselor Costin. All in favor? Opposed? Carry.